Call to our planning commission meeting September 22nd, 7:00 PM.
We're good.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion please?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, um, you guys move fast. Um, we do have an item to add to the agenda. It's just a business item.
No problem. Let me jot that down.
It's, um, yes, it was, it's about, um, some property near Gale Woods. Three Rivers is looking at making a purchase. So as part of the process, when a public agency seeks to buy, um, private land, we have to basically give it the okay.
Is that part of the packet?
It is not. It kind of came together after the packet was.
So you'll, you'll review the.
I'll, I'll, I'll prevent for, I'll verbally present it to you. I don't have anything prepared otherwise.
Okay, so Three Rivers is purchasing a parcel of.
Near Gale Woods.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, so. Is the, uh, motion in second on the amended agenda again?
Can I get approval of the amended agenda?
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second again.
Okay, all in favor for the amended agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we pass that. Um, second item is approved with minutes from July because we skipped August. You get a motion please.
Um, we'll approve, uh, the approval of the minutes from July 28th.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, pass. Um, second item on the agenda is a public hearing. Uh, A is gonna be for, 3275 County Road 44. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, uh, thank you Chair, members of the commission. Um, the public hearing on your agenda tonight is a setback variance. Um, it requires variance from both the front yard setback, the street side, and from the lake shore setback. Um, the applicants are seeking to, um, tear down the existing dwelling and detach garage. And in its place, build a, um, new single family dwelling, um, generally in the same footprint. Um, will have a little bit different elevations and such. The plans for that have been included in your packet for you to review. So with that being said, um, taking a look at the standard variance criteria, um, with them putting it back in basically the same spot. It seems pretty straightforward. Uh, house has been there for several decades. Doesn't seem to really cause anyone any issues. So the, the new structure, i- i- the hopes would be that it would be consistent and the, the issues wouldn't, uh, wouldn't pop up here. So, um, feel it satisfies the variance criteria. Um, as outlined in your staff report. Um, we did send notices to those within 500 feet. This is kind of a unique property. Doesn't have any like immediate neighbor, right? It's got the channel, the lake, et cetera. There are houses across the street and then, uh, up in Eagle Bluff. Um, but we did not hear any public comment as a result of our notice. Um, so with that being said, um, planning commission should hold the republic, uh, required public hearing, allow anyone the opportunity to speak. Um, once that has passed, close the hearing and then discuss amongst yourself. Um, the, um, the motion that we would, uh, be looking for here is to recommend approval of the setback variances, um, subject to conditions in the staff report and based on the findings of fact outlined therein as well. Okay, perfect. If you have any questions of me, um, happy to answer those. Otherwise, we do have our applicant here. If there's, uh, more detailed questions specific to their project, that if you have any.
Do you have a sketch of current footprint in the new footprint?
I think it's right.
It's in there. It's in there. Just go bring it up on the screen.
Page 11.
With a, not as an overlay though. You don't, right? Two separate sketches, I'll bet. I was just curious, if you laid the old overlay on top of the new one, what we'd see as a difference in footprint?
Yeah, I mean, don't have the best diagram readily available. Um, but yeah, the survey, um, you know, I can pull it up here. Um, yeah, the, the kind of where it says proposed dwelling is where the existing house sits. And then here is kind of where a garage sits. And there is, what will be filled in, a void, uh, right? Um, here where it will be new garage space with the new structure.
But we are moving closer to the water in two dimensions?
Um, I, I don't believe it gets much if any closer to the lake than the current structure sits. If you look.
Yeah.
Here at the aerial, um, I don't, obviously this doesn't have any dimensions on it. But, you know, you can kind of see how, you know, this existing massing is here. Um, no, I thought the one I wanted to do. And then the garage is here. So he basically will be looking at structure that kind of fills in this area here. So it shouldn't be much of any closer. Maybe the applicant.
Yeah.
Illuminate me.
You want to do that after the public hearing?
Yes.
That will be, okay. Let's open the public hearing. Then anyone here to speak to that other than the applicant? Alright, we'll close the public hearing.
You have them ask questions. They should come to the podium because it's being recorded. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, applicant, please come, uh, to the front. Name and address, please.
I'm Chris Hagan, uh, 3275 County Road 44, Minotrista. Thank you.
Alright.
So just to my, to my other question, roughly what new dimensions would grow from the existing footprint? That's what I'm trying to get a sense for. How far are you going one direction or the other?
So on the, uh, the 44 side, which is the corner of our garage, that's the exact same spot where our current garage is now.
Okay.
And the backside of the garage is facing the channel. That's in the exact same spot as well.
Okay.
And the front of the garage on the street side is the same. Right now, the garage is detached from the house. So, um, we're, want to connect the garage to the house and the new line that continues along that channel. Um, we have a deck on that whole side and the new house would be on top of the deck. But about three feet in towards the existing house from where the deck is, so not any closer than where, where the current deck is. And then on the, on the, the channel side, um, that bump out itself is about three feet closer than where the existing deck is right now. And then there's a deck right on the corner. That's the closest point to the water and that as well is about three feet closer. And then on the, the biggest part of the addition is on the right-hand side of the house. That is adding, I believe it's about 11 feet towards the, uh, towards the north part of 44.
Okay.
But that area is also 38 feet from the road right away. So that would meet setbacks as it is.
I just have a question. I, it's, it's just, it's not, it's just a general question. But it looks like the prop, the retaining wall I see is being, according to the survey, there's a, there's mentioned that they're gonna be removing portion of the retaining wall. But yet that's not, as it looks like on the map, it's not their property. The property line is above, the red line is above the retaining wall. So to remove that piece, is that included? Is that?
Well, it looks like it's pointing to a single wall that's just inside the property line. There is multiple walls there, but I'm assuming the.
That wasn't true.
I'm assuming the higher up walls aren't being disturbed by the project.
Cause it says the lower part of the wall will be, portion will be removed.
Lower tier, yeah. The lower tier is basically right on the property.
And I've just.
Okay.
I mean, I, that's Google Maps. I wouldn't consider.
And the Google Maps is also, yes.
Yeah, I know, I know. G I, G S maps don't work that well either. I just wanted to make sure that I asked that question.
It's for the new elevation. The garage needs to go up because to get, um, for the new building code to be at the 933.5, I believe, to get the garage and house to work, um, the garage has to go up to three elevation. This is current floor. And so that is gonna eliminate part of that retaining wall that's on the, on our side of where the black line is.
Gotcha. Okay, that's, that answers my question. Thank you.
And the, uh, the home was originally built in what year?
I'm not sure. Um, I believe it was before the 60s.
Yeah.
And it's been added on to before. We've been there for, uh, just about eight years.
It's been there over 40 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, any other questions?
I just had a question about how, when the plows come through, if there's gonna be any impact with the change in the retaining wall? And I don't know, since the, it'll be attached, it seems like the drainage might not do the right thing getting to the channel. Um, you've lived there for a long time. So are you worried about that at all?
I'm not. Yeah, that retaining wall is, the part that's gonna get removed is probably about four feet below the road level right now. So those retaining walls are going down.
Yeah, I drove by and I couldn't quite tell.
So all, all the drainage pattern to stay the same, coming into the driveway and then going down that side.
Great. It's beautiful.
Well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I've watched you mowing out there as I went down the channel. I know you're attentive.
Um, yeah, so let's have a discussion. Any, any challenges with this?
I don't see any. That was, yeah, other than I'm jealous. It's gonna be beautiful.
The packet was comprehensive. You answered all my questions.
Pretty clear.
So, um, what we'll do is, let me just get that up, um, on page eight.
You guys can say it because I don't want to talk.
Okay, uh, there's a recommendation one through four and no, we're not talking about adding any additional.
Yep.
Recommendations, right? So, um, can I get a motion? For?
Oh, I will make a motion to recommend the city council approve the requested front yard and lake shore setback variances at 3275 County Road 44, based on certain findings of fact outlined in staff report and subject to conditions one through four.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everyone voted yes.
Yep, so this is a recommendation, um, reported to the city council at their first meeting in October, I believe, two weeks from tonight, um, for final action. Um, based on tonight, it'll be on consent agenda, so I wouldn't worry about attending. So.
I just told them they should just in case, but, but that's up to you. It should, it should go, but I'm just saying. But you're welcome to come no matter what. Come see him in action. That's the fun part.
And you don't have to say for the last meeting.
No, you're good. Yep, yep. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Alright, um, so the next item on the agenda is the amended, uh, addition.
Correct. Yep. Um, so yes, um, got wind that, um, the owners here at 6801 County Road 15, um, approached Three Rivers Park District about selling it and, uh, to them. And Three Rivers likes to operate on a willing seller basis. They like to, um, have that.
It's that parcel, right?
It's the one highlighted here in this, in the blue. So I mean, as you can see, green all around at Gale Woods. It's pretty straightforward for this to be acquired by the park and become part of the, um, overall, uh, plan for Gale Woods.
They were in holding at Gale Woods, kind of?
I think they just said.
It was a separate parcel.
Separate parcel and they just lived there for, I don't know how long and.
They were surrounded by Gale Woods on three sides.
Correct.
That'd be lovely. Gale Woods belonged to.
Alfred Gale, yep.
Leona Gale. And it was there, so, and it was a farm.
Right.
So at some point in time, they probably, um, subdivided, it's probably like three acres is my guess.
This is an acre and a half of this one here.
And so what happens in the egg district is you could subdivide a certain little parcel and put a house on it, like for a family member or whatever. Well, that might have happened, who knows how many years ago. Yeah, so maybe that's why that separate little parcel is there. So when Gale and Alfred, when Alfred Gale gave this, donated it to Three Rivers, then that little parcel was in a different, under a different title, ownership.
Alright. Well, I'm sure Gale Woods will be very happy to have Three Rivers.
The only thing, um, that makes any kind of a difference and not much at all is that it no longer is on our tax records. In other words, they're not taxed. It comes off of our tax, um.
Income.
They're not taxed now?
The current owner is, but when Three Rivers takes over, they're, uh, they don't pay.
They're exempt.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, what's the valuation?
Denied.
Like 350, I think, or something like that.
Probably 1,500.
360.
Not even that. It's probably, yeah, maybe a thousand dollars. Well, on a 7 million.
And they pay 3,200 and 3,300 in taxes.
But that's, that's.
That's, that's, that's overall. That's, the, the city portion of that is far less.
25, 24.
Yeah.
The rumors.
It's about 25%.
Alright.
So a little over a thousand, not even a thousand.
No, it'll be like 800, 800.
If anybody asks you, you say, yes, we, we did discuss that. We, we're aware of that. But the minimal, um, amount of tax that we get from this parcel is, is so modest. And it's gonna be made up by the growth in Woodland Cove. There you go.
Yeah, yay us.
Well, Gale Woods is such a gem in our community.
Yeah, it is.
They're such good stewards of the land.
I like the idea of allowing.
I mean, they didn't have to sell to Gale Woods. It's a pitiful, that's kind of cool.
And they're not interested in expanding right now. This, this parcel just makes.
Seems like an animal situation. Yeah.
But does it get written over to, uh, Three Rivers then right away?
Do you have to, you have to transaction, yeah?
They'll have to go through a closing. Yeah. All that good stuff.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, we're just.
What, what actions are you gonna ask this?
Yeah, I was gonna explain a little bit. Yes, or the reason we're doing this is that we're statistically required to do that. Um, so you as the planning commission are the planning agency, you report to the city council. So basically, it's just a motion directly on the city council, adopt a resolution of support for the purchase of, uh, 6801 County Road 15.
I would make.
And then it's consistent with.
Take a motion that says exactly that. Please.
Can I get a second?
I'll second. Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It'll come to this, this.
Which lake is that?
City and then the city has to.
Uh, it's called Lake Flanagan, although I'm not sure. It's, I don't know. That's what they call it.
Within the, Three Rivers?
Yep.
They were on Whale Tail or part of Whale Tail.
No, they do. Whale Tail's over here.
Now it's over. Yeah.
Gale Woods is on, on Whale Tail.
I, I was, yeah.
Yeah, it's on Whale Tail.
Oh, I see. There we go.
Okay, now I'm trying to get, yeah.
That's where it all fits.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Gale Woods is about 410 acres. So now it'll be 411 acres.
Love it.
Good number.
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna move to the next portion of the, uh, uh, meeting, which is the information, informational items.
Mm-hmm.
First on that is staff reports.
Um, I don't really have a lot. Um, we have, uh, this Friday's our deadline for our October meeting. Um, got a few feelers out there, so it's quite likely we'll have a, an agenda for October. Um, so that'll be the fourth, uh, Monday, which I think is like the 27th or something like that. Um, so keep that date open on your calendar. Uh, that's really all I have. Um, yeah.
I was gonna say that. So there have been some inquiries, but we are kind of keeping it on the lowdown until we get an actual application.
Fair enough.
And, uh, and Nick and David and, uh, they'll do a great job if, if it comes through reviewing it and you'll see it in October.
Awesome.
We're running out of, um, lots in Woodland Cove. So, um, it would be good if we had some more development, um, on, coming online for next year. Um, the Halsted Bay product, project at Old Trailer Court.
Now, are we move to the council report or staff, staff report?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. I'm good. We're on, we're on the council.
Okay, so we're gonna move to the next item on the agenda.
Council report.
That's a, that's a.
Adding, adding.
We're all friends here now.
Nope.
Our chair keeps us.
We're gonna move, we're gonna move to the council report.
I have a question about the Woodland Cove thing though. Are there more? So I know that there's, there's a new place going in right on Kings Point, right across from Mackin Toons. But isn't there a whole development behind Mackin Toons that's gonna have spots?
There is a lot there.
Cause I know they're owned by.
Commercial lot.
It's a, it's a sea, I believe, right? Out, it's, isn't it?
Outlet sea. It's outlet sea. Yeah, it's outlet sea.
Initially talked to a daycare.
Yeah, that was initial thought, so that obviously did not materialize.
But the other, the other part is, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's also a commercial lot across from.
Yeah, right by the townhomes. Right there.
Right.
I thought that was all settled.
And so that's, no, that one's not.
There's, there's two outlets in addition to one being developed right now.
And then there's one, there's one, where's Woodland Cove? See, see, right there, where his mouse is?
Yeah, there's one under construction.
That one's getting done. And then the one right over there.
On across the street and then the one back here.
That one's gonna be tricky because. See a gas station.
Well, let's look at the council reports.
Fire station on the corner here.
Let's.
That's correct.
It has a mobile.
It's all your, in Florida, yes.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, so that's, that's that. And like I said, Woodland Cove has, you know, as, as you know, it's kind of running out of lots. So this would be a nice, um, if, if this happens, it would be good. The Halsted, and I'll kind of give you a little bit of, um, information on the Halsted. This, um, one of the owners of the property came to the city and asked to have a meeting with myself and David and, and Jasper, because they wanted the city to, uh, float about a $20 million bond. And we're like, nah, that's not gonna happen. And, uh, then, then they said, well, you know, we would like you to float a bond, uh, for the public improvement portion of the project. And we need, and that's about 12 million. And we said, nah, that's also not gonna happen. And, um, and we said, there's, there's no collateral here. I mean, come on, this is ridiculous. And we said, and we've never been in, we've never done this and we're not in the, you know, in the position to do this now. And then they said, well, how about three and a half million? All the while, they're saying that they have the funds to do this project. So we're kind of scratching our heads, wondering why they're asking the city to do this. So we're waiting. Apparently they have the funding. This is what we've been told. Um, and I think you said you haven't heard back from mound yet, so.
Yeah, I'm not aware of their status with mound. Mound usually pretty about telling us, um, when they, you know, when someone submits anything, you know, that might impact us. Um, but have no word from mound that.
Well, they better not early start anything because the title company will check and see if they've got enough skin in the game.
Well.
When they close on the land.
Well, they own the land.
They own the land. So they, they better not, they early start and they don't have enough skin in the game because that's what you're thinking. That will be a problem.
I don't know. They say they have the funding, so I think they might. They're just trying to.
Just.
They're just trying to see if, uh, we know what we're doing.
This is still trailer.
That's crazy.
So I, I told them we had a little bit of experience behind, behind their here. So anyhow, um, so we don't know, um, we don't know yet anything.
Yeah.
We really don't know anymore than a couple of months.
Just don't hold your breath.
I thought they were ready to jump the rock.
All they wanted to, yeah.
Say one thing, do another thing.
Um, so the other, um, thing that the councils, uh, obviously we approved the plans and specs for, um, um, unauthorized, um, publication of, of the, uh, going off for bids for the water treatment plant. Um, then in the last hour after the, yeah, bids were out and everything, uh, some of the residents in Woodland Cove were all upset because the road was gonna go behind their house that they didn't know about. Excuse me, hello, wake up. Anyhow, um, and so then we kind of pivoted and we changed the access road. And we extended the, um, the timeframe in which to submit the, um, the plans or the bids. It, it delayed it by a couple of weeks, but, um, so we're gonna be, we were gonna open the end of September, but we'll open probably in October now. So that'll be coming to the council for approval or, um, we'll be awarding the contract. Hopefully the, the bids come in somewhere where we think. But if you are in city water, just be prepared, your rates are gonna go up a lot. So just be prepared. That's why we also want more development. Um, and, uh, if they do, uh, start, they would be starting either this fall, probably this fall, uh, late fall and then, um, or else even into, because they can start anytime almost. And.
Is there, is there not any consideration on the council and fact that Minotrista's water rate is like the highest?
It's not. It's really not. So here's the thing. We're actually, we're, yeah, it's a perception. We're actually lower than Orinol and we're right in par with, uh, mound and mound has crappy water. I mean, really bad water. So how would you like to pay your rates for the water that mound has?
Yeah.
So just think about that.
Sure.
Um.
Well, then I think, I think one thing I'd encourage you guys to, uh, to me, is probably communicate to what the rates. Cause I mean, I'm sure their rates have been going up.
We're, we've been raised.
You know.
Right.
But around the, around the.
Do a comparison.
Community. I mean, maybe we should, we should like.
Done that. Yeah.
I've seen that in your newsletter.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So and we'll, we'll continue to do that and we're gonna be, um, in the back of your water bill or utility bill. You'll be seeing, um, information. Um, it'll be on our website as well. Um, this shouldn't be new news to anyone because we held a, um, an open house, um, last year, uh, kind of telling people, hey, your water rates.
Okay, so we're not talking about a new rate increase. We're talking about the old rate increase. You're just reiterating.
No, we're gonna have, uh, and more rate increases.
Okay, oh, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And so we'll be, we'll be putting that out on our website and also on your, uh, utility bills. And, um, I don't know if we'll hold a town hall meeting or not. I, I have to talk to staff regarding that. But, um, yeah, conservation, if people are conservative, the other thing we've talked about is doing monthly billings, water billings versus, um, quarterly.
What a good idea.
Um, because that will give you a better idea as to what, what your bill is rather than getting huge bill at the.
I have a question about that.
How's do I?
Okay, go for it. Go ahead.
How much would that increase, increase our costs?
Um, it would probably require a, a full-time, one full-time person. So, um, not a whole lot in, in the overall scheme. When you think about, we have, we're probably having to take out about a 20 million or 22 million dollar bond. So when you add a $60,000 employee or whatever it might be, you know, it's not that much.
And that, 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 that rate increase is gonna be a tiered rate based on your usage.
Yes, but every tier is gonna go up.
Right, right.
Um, so back to the monthly versus quarterly, one of the things I noticed as someone to Minotrista is the quarterly bill comes out, which is fine, but the ability to go in and pay it, if I, let's say, the, let's say the bill's due in December. And I wanna go in and pay something now, it doesn't let you. So maybe you keep it quarterly, but make the allowance so people could go in and put money toward what they know is coming. Like I've had to call the city and like, you know what I mean? Cause it just, it locks it out. So like if I log on, I wanna, my bill's not due yet. But if I wanna toss in a hundred and fifty dollars toward, I know what's coming, that'd be cool if I could do that.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
Yeah, I don't know if our software can do that. I don't know. Um, I'm not involved in that.
I call the, I call the water person and she takes my card.
And I can, I can mention that when we talk about rates, but, um, one of, like I said, one of the things we've talked about is, um, monthly billing so that people don't get hit with a, you know, six, $700 bill in a quarter, you know? So maybe it's gonna be 200, 300.
Yeah.
Month or something like that, whatever it is. We've been talking about different things. Um, yeah, um, possibly having, um, even doing, increasing our rate a little bit, but then having everybody pay what we call a, um, a, um, one flat fee. Like it would be for a water treatment fee, in other words. So we, we've kind of tried to explore different options to make it easier. But the more homes combined, the, the better it will be.
So is that, is that in reference to like an annual component flat fee or kind of like it's just?
It would be either quarterly or, or monthly, whatever.
Oh, just a one flat fee for.
For the water treatment.
That, that is gonna be specifically.
Yes, yeah.
So is that considered like a bond or?
No, it's, it's just a fee for you.
Like an assessment?
Okay.
Kind of thing?
Yeah, but there's no interest in.
Okay.
It's just a fee. So maybe we, we do a hundred and thirty dollars a month. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing that.
Yeah.
And everybody pays that because everybody needs a treatment plant regardless of how much water you use.
Yeah.
That would be one. Sarah?
Is that, would that fee go towards people who are not on city water as well?
No.
Okay.
So here's the, um.
Have we considered that? I'm, full disclosure, I am not on city water, but I live in the city.
No, you can't because you have to pay for the benefit. And if you're not in city water or you can't even hook up to city water, which is about two-thirds of our community, um, you don't have that option. Um, I'm certainly not gonna pay for you to have, um, treated water when I have to, I have my own well. I have to maintain my own.
Yeah, you have the benefit, which is good. To have a well.
Then just say, well, now you have to pay in. You, you actually legally can't.
Got it.
I think the word assessment goes over a lot better for people knowing that, I mean, we want a lot of, I want a water treatment plant. Instead of raising my water rates, like assessing me for that, for that new thing that you're giving us in the city. I think that, that kind of, that narrative is, I think, better received. This is my opinion.
Again, there's some issues with, um, an overall or an assessment. Um, and that assessment would be pretty high. And the other thing you have to understand is we're building this not just for the current users, but also for the future users. So then how do you figure out an assessment, not only for the current users, but then for future users? And so what we're hoping.
That's true.
What we're hoping to do is we're hoping to have this, we're called, if, if we do it this way, and not saying we are, we haven't finalized it. But if we do a fee, a plant fee, um, that would be reduced as we get more homes online. So let's just say it's a hundred and thirty dollars a month now. And then we get another 100 homes. Then that would reduce that amount because that amount is spread over 100 more new.
Got it.
So, um, whereas an assessment, you can't really go back.
You can. You can transfer assessment to a new, oh, homeowner, but for new stuff, yeah, you can't figure that in. True.
That's, that's, that issue. The other, um, the other thing we did is we did pass our preliminary levy. It's at 9.42% increase and, um, And um most of that is again for staffing levels and um and streets and um and capital improvement projects or or equipment. And so we may have to do a little bit. We can't increase it. We can decrease it, but that's gonna happen because of some things that we've found out over the um in the past few months here. But um it won't increase.
So that's this coming tax year.
For twenty twenty-six.
And then twenty twenty-five is a seven point something?
No, in twenty twenty-five, we had uh for this year, we had about, I think, a nine percent.
Was it nine percent?
Mm-hmm. They've been, um, it a lot of it is um because of staffing. Um, in order to stay um relevant and in par with our our counterparts, we have in order to have great staff. Um, we uh we need to pay them um appropriately. And if we lose our staff because we don't pay them in order to get good, qualified new staff, we're gonna be paying them more.
So in the last couple of years, I know you said that the the anticipated cost of the road improvements have have drastically drastically increased over the last few years.
They have. They've kind of leveled out a little bit now. Um, our road improvement projects for this year uh came in just a tad bit under. So we don't know what they'll be doing for next year. Uh, we are gonna be bonding for our road improvement projects for next year.
Bonding.
Um, we're probably gonna have to bond around three point five million. Um, but then, of course, we have to pay for those bonds, obviously. So um we might be uh taking a little bit of a break in, maybe in twenty twenty-seven, we'll be taking slight break from doing major road improvement projects. Might be smaller scale and then um maybe just more maintenance. Um, so we'll we'll be looking at that. Um, we also uh brought on, so I don't know if any of you are familiar with Ally Poulos. She was our um assistant administrator. And uh she accepted a job as the administrator um in Breezy Point. Um, congratulations to her. Sorry for us. However, we've been able to replace her with um a new lady. Her name is Paula Bowman, and she comes to us with twenty-four years of experience from Delano. She actually had the same um position that Ally had here before Ally was promoted. So Ally started out here as our um administrative um assistant or administrative director. Um, I don't know, whatever that title.
Titles.
And then um we, last year, we promoted her to be the assistant administrator. And so um Paula comes to us kind of with that same thing. She was at the same title as Ally in Delano, and she's now going to be as now our assistant administrator. So um uh she's, she just started October twenty fifth, August twenty-fifth. I've met her a few times. Um, but um she's only been here not even a month. So I'm in staff is giving me glowing reports about her, so I'm sure she'll be here for a while and we're really happy to have her. Uh, as you know, um, she falls retired and um Lieutenant Squires has taken over. That was back in March. And I've had some interactions with him and he's fantastic. I'm very glad that we were able to uh do that um transition very easily and quickly. Because he's he's very good at what he does and it really uh works well. And then Pat Cummings was promoted to the deputy chief position. So um we're we're really um glad to have and very fortunate to have that. Um, that's pretty much it on the staffing level. We're, uh, let's see, what else? Staffing, uh, treatment plan, budget, roads. Um, and then also in the police department, we authorized a Milo system. If you're from, might not know about this, but so there's a, there was an empty uh space that was uh initially, um, we thought we would do a gun range in there. But that didn't work out really well just because of the space. And now we've we've used some of it for um for storage. And the other part is it's a Milo system. What it is, it's like in a like, it's like you're playing on a computer, basically, and it comes up. You'd play like this. Anyhow, so it comes up with different scenarios and you have to, and it's like real life kind of thing. And so that's almost up and running. It should have been up and running, but there were a few glitches, but um that should be up and running.
And Peter said last um last or two months ago, he said that we'll be leasing that out to other departments. Is that correct?
It can be. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it can. Other departments can come in and pay a small fee to to use it. It's a good training tool. And it's actually, they say it's better than just a gun range because you actually have um different scenarios.
And so if they have the vests and all the like the body stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
It's cool.
Yeah. I haven't seen it yet, so I can't.
Try it.
Yeah, but I told them I want to try it. So I said, as long as I don't have to have a real gun, I'll be fine.
Yeah.
So um so uh we'll, I'm sure the whole council will go over there during the work session and and uh take, you know, be trained or not trained on it, but show us how it works. So we're kind of looking forward to that. And then um just a reminder, please put it on your calendars. We just want people to come to the next um December fifth or sixth, I can't remember the date, of our holiday tree lighting event. Um, it should be spectacular again. Uh, it was great last year, a little bit cold, so we're hoping for a little bit warmer weather, but we had a fantastic fireworks display.
Amazing.
Yeah. December fourth, okay.
December fourth, okay.
So please mark it on your calendar. Bring the kids. Santa will be there. Fire trucks, lighted holiday fire trucks will be there.
And are they not as the parade done, like the fire truck, police car parade through the neighborhoods?
I don't know. Um, that's not, we don't do that because it's mound fire or St. Bonnie fire. But um if they do, if they did it last year, they probably will do it again. I don't know.
Um, I don't think they did it last year, but they did it the previous years and.
Okay.
My neighbors are upset about it.
Well, they, I know they have a lot of requests and so that might be part of it, but um but tell them to come to the holiday tree lighting.
Yeah.
That's even more fun.
And it's fun.
Um, and there's a wine and beer tent, wine and beer. That's all I can think about.
Lisa, thank you so much. Your council reports are always so detailed. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, they are.
Very much.
Very full of information.
Um, it's that time. There's nothing else? Okay, we got a motion to a.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, hi.
And the other thing I would have, um, just once in a while, not to do it for every meeting, watch one of our council meetings. Just.